Alright, being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the uh, Child and Play Board meeting for February seventh, twenty twenty four, for a study of public hearing for Boston Outdoor Living, site plan modification at two twenty Sturridge Road. The consent section is two hundred dash three point two, two hundred, yeah, seven point one D and two hundred dash seven point two. The children's zone by law, the children's board will hold a public hearing Wednesday, February seventh, twenty twenty four, seven PM by Zoom meeting. Meeting ID number two one two nine three two two five seven, and present for the plan board office room at the George C McKinsey Building, thirty seven Main Street, Chalk and Mass on the site plan. Modification, application of Commerford LLC, United States, Illinois, Sturridge Ranch. Only one five six six for site plan modification, food for storage area, Jason's property at two twenty Sturridge Road, Chalk and Mass, only five seven. The applicant proposes to use this site as a storage area with equipment, parking and storage containers. The property is located next to two twenty Sturridge Road, sets to have thirty one blocks, seen partial six point one two. And is two point seven acres in the zone industrial general. This meeting of the child planning board will be conducted in person, if you buy remote participation. Specific information, the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public enterprise, they write. You are required to attend the meeting can be found on the town board website at W W W dot com. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen or watch the meeting, reducing the volume of man every day participation, H T T S, call them. Backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash two one one two nine three two two five seven. Meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven, phone access one six four six five five eight E six five six. Cop said the special permit and site plan application are available. When special at the planning board office in the town parks, office during regular business hours. Any person that enters or sit, we're simply encouraged to appear at the time of place designated.
I just wanna confirm, Jay DuBois, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay, great, thank you.
Alright, um, the applicant's um, engineers on Zoom meeting. So Jay, do you want to do a quick overview if you don't mind?
Sure, um, so Jason DuBois, D C Engineering, uh, representing Commerford LLC on this property. Uh, it is that two twenty Sturridge Road and um, so to the west side of this, of this property, uh, over the property line, there actually started construction for a um, a garage landscaping building that was approved uh, back in two thousand fifteen. Uh, they're just waiting for their building permit currently, but they've started site work out there. This property, uh, as you can see on the plan, there's a property line. And this is the eastern portion of the original parcel. Um, that this lot was split into two. And this eastern side there, they did already do the grading, um, and put down gravel uh, on this, on this portion, which is what we're here for tonight, uh, which would be his uh, site plan modification. Um, they basically are gonna be using it for uh, gravel parking areas for accessory use to the landscaping building uh, on the other, other side of the property line. Um, this has been submitted to Graves, which we have gotten comments back. Um, we haven't gotten Graves' comments uh, addressed completely yet. Um, any additional comments from the board tonight, we'd, we'd like to just, you know, send out one additional set of plans. Um, so on, on the site plan right now is everything that, that is out on the site, other than the proposed detention basin. Uh, when we ran the drainage calculations on what they had done out there. Uh, that they required to put in a detention basin as, as we have shown um, on the eastern side of the site. Um, there are some containers out there that are gonna have to be moved uh, further away from the property lines. Those are, those are within the setback, some of them. Um, other than that, it's, it's pretty much proposed to stay as it is, as it is right now. So if there's any, any questions, I can try to address them and, and like I said, we'll, we'll just get, get uh, any additional comments and we can take care of those as well as the Graves' comments, uh, hopefully for the next meeting.
Alright, thank you, Jason.
Kurt Madsen's uh, zoning officer's already, you know, brought the attention about the uh, containers being moved and as Jay has already mentioned, they intend to bring the containers, you know, so they're not in the setback, you know, they'll be moved further into the property basically.
Thank you. In our packet, we have the Graves' report dated January fifteenth, as well as uh, the letter that Randy was just referencing, as far as Kurt making a point of, of the uh, the existing containers placed on the property are in the setback, which Jason from D C Engineering did say that they are gonna be moved back to uh, be satisfactory per zoning setbacks.
Yeah, it's such, because there were such a minimal changes and everything, rather than redo the plans, they have plans redone once again, you know, that they haven't submitted revised formal plan yet, but they will have to, you know, should the board approve the application, they'll submit a set of revised plans, regional grades requirements, as well as Kurt's requirements for the project.
Go ahead, John.
So are they working there now, even though there's a stop work order? What does that mean?
I think it's a stop work order on the eastern portion of the property, right, Jay?
Got the whole property?
Just as.
No, the property with the buildings being constructed. Um, they're not stopped working on the building, the building, the property with the building is in compliance with our, you know, all the approvals, it's just the eastern portion where they've done that clearing and grading.
Cause I think they did do an A, correct me if I'm wrong, Jay, didn't they do an A and R from the last year to slip it into two lots?
Uh, no, the A and R was done back in, I think, like, twenty sixteen or seventeen.
Okay, I got you. Alright, thank you for correcting me.
Yeah, and, and they are not doing any additional work on that eastern side currently, they're focusing on the western side. Um, and once this is, you know, is resolved, they are gonna go in and, and continue with the drainage and get the detention basin built.
We also did send Graves Engineering over to look at the western side of the property to make sure of the area where they're constructing the building, they're in compliance. And Graves did submit a report saying that everything on the western side where the building's going, it's fine.
Do, do we have a plan on that, or?
Well, yeah, the submitted plan that they got approved back in two thousand fifteen.
Oh, really?
So it's been a while, I know, but.
And that's just off of this drawing?
Right, yeah. It's the only drive we go left to right.
Yeah. But then this is a whole nother lot, right, this?
Right.
Lot line, it's a whole nother site application.
But because the amount of disturbance that Mike Andres felt that they should do a modification, because it is one, it's two separate parcels, they can be two separate projects, but you know, since the common driveway and everything and the grades could be affected as a result of what they've done, that he felt that a site plan modification was necessary.
Plus the containers that were dropped down there.
Yeah, I mean, if they go to want to do any further development on that portion of the pro, that property, they'd have to come back here anyways.
Any other questions that come to the, go ahead, John.
Alright, so this, this is just for the property over here.
Correct.
Right, there's nothing going on. I'd like to know, is there possible to know what's going on, but we'll have to dig up those plans to see what's going on on the western side.
What is it, a, is it five thousand square foot building, Jay?
I need to figure that.
Cause that's what it was.
Um, yeah, I think whatever was approved is, i- i- it's whatever was approved, it's the same size. I think it's a, it's a four or five thousand square feet.
Like a gymnastic building.
Correct, exactly, right across the street.
I hadn't, I hadn't noticed it.
Yeah.
Do we, do we?
So what, what was the original site plan application for this lot? It didn't have that lower gravel parking?
Yeah, it was one big parcel of land.
Yeah.
Originally, and then they, um, after they got the original approval for the building, they did an A and R, just flipped the lot in two. So this, originally this portion of the property was gonna remain untouched at that time.
Are they the same, uh, cause I mean, there's no access to this lot, if you look at this site plan?
No, they're using the common driveway.
So is it the same owner?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 But they split the lot?
Yeah.
And previously, the lot went all the way to the east boundary?
Correct, originally.
So back in two thousand fifteen, when he had the site plan approved for the building, he had a potential buyer for the eastern side, that's why he had done the A and R, but that fell through. Um, so now they just, they just wanna, they just wanna use that side for additional parking, you know, for landscaping, equipment and, and trailers. Um, and he does potentially wanna do something on that side at some point, but he doesn't know what yet, so at this point, he just wants to use it as a gravel, gravel uh, overflow parking area.
So did the original site plan include an entrance to this property on the east side that we're looking at?
No, the original site plan had, yeah, the original site plan in two thousand fifteen had the entrance shown where the entrance um, is shown on that plan, just, just to the western side of the property line.
Right.
So there's a single entrance in, there's a single entrance into the site that they're using that was on the original site plan that was approved.
I guess that's what I'm saying, so this eastern lot that we're looking at had no original site plan. It was part of this.
Yeah, it was part of the.
Original one, so it was one single lot.
The original.
Yeah, yeah.
And they were often the brother before it was split.
Yep, so, so the plan is just the parking lot.
Yeah.
That's basically what it is.
Parking.
And then they have some containers out there to put stuff in.
And is um, the building inspector making them remove, or just relocate the containers?
Relocate, but they do have to get a permit, well, cause even though they, well, temporary, he doesn't look at things as temporary. His temporary can become permanent.
Okay.
So that, they'll have to move so they're compliant for zoning, and then he has to get a permit for the, for any of the containers.
Okay, got it, Jay.
Alright, uh, do we wanna wait to get Graves' that, Graves' report back? Alright.
I mean, basically, I should bring that whole parcel up to stormwater regulations.
Yeah.
So, I just have a.
So wait for the revised plan before we vote.
Alright, do we have a motion to continue the public hearing to um, February twenty first?
Yeah.
Is that enough time?
February twenty first, do you have enough time? Is that enough time for you, Jay? February twenty first?
Probably not to get everything done and back to Graves and then get a comment, you know, back, so what, what's the first meeting in March?
March, uh.
March sixth.
March sixth?
March sixth.
Yeah, why don't we go for that?
Alright.
Okay. Make a motion to continue this site plan modification with two twenty Sturridge Street to the sixth of March meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, wow, here, right?
Alright. Aye. Aye.
Why are you supposed to, oh, it's a second modification, sorry, aye, alright, thanks, Jay.
Thanks, thanks.
Alright, have a good night, thank you.
You too, thanks, Mike.
Alright, next up, we have uh, review of the plan boards twenty, two, twenty twenty three annual report, and our packet is the annual report, a copy of it. It uh, lists uh, on twenty twenty three, we have subdivisions, uh, site plan applications, special permits approved, um, A and Rs, stats on that, uh, some bylaw amendments, field changes.
Busy year.
Yeah, it was. So.
Did we always list them out like that? I mean, it's good.
With that?
We always listed them out like that, all the projects? I mean, it's good that we do.
Yeah, it, we are, I think, you know, shows that we're just not sitting around doing nothing, you know?
Sitting around, I'm eating, eating candy, okay.
So it shows what exactly, you know, what we're currently working on, or did work on the past year, so.
Podcast happening tonight? Is the podcast happening?
No, it's true, yeah, it's true.
They were true, they're coming up now.
Not happening. Think so. Think so.
They can, they can, she can, they can stick around waiting.
Sorry.
How's it going?
Good, it's alright, it's alright.
It's alright?
Right.
So, so how many to approve this or anything, or just a?
Uh, yeah, just a vote to accept.
It looks great, Jay, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah.
Vote to accept it so that it will be submitted to the, uh, court's plan.
See annual report, don't.
Okay, okay.
Just the stats and stuff, what we did from last year. Let me go ahead. Alright, we have a motion to approve the um, twenty twenty three annual report for the planning board?
Alright, motion to accept.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, unanimous, alright. Next up, we have the minutes from uh, January seventeenth, twenty twenty four, it's a draft. These are last minute.
Make a motion to accept them as presented?
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, unanimous, alright, other business on under the time of posting?
Uh, yes, uh, we have a, um, yeah, as requested by the plan board, they wanted to have a, it's a traffic consultant review. Um, traffic reports from for the project at sixteen Sturridge Road, they submitted their, you know, proposed contract. It's the same traffic consultant we use for two forty one Sturridge Road and the Amazon project. Um, basically, we just gotta, I need the planning board, um, authorization to sign it. Uh, Burton Engineering's already aware that we're doing this and that they're gonna have to post E S O for it, so um, the, the cost of the traffic consult will come out of peer review. So they have like one initial cost and then they have, you know, hourly rates on different services. Attending or what maybe required to them, attending meetings and other thing, but. So yeah, just, we need the plan board to go to, you know.
Make motion.
As a traffic consultant and we have to sign, so that we can send it back to them. And then, once they get the uh, E S O money from Burton Engineering toward the applicant, then we'll have them get started on their review.
Alright, we have a motion to um, use M D M transportation consultants for the traffic.
I'll make motion to use M D M transportation consultants for sixteen Sturridge Road on behalf of the town.
I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, aye. Alright, unanimous, sorry. Alright.
Yeah, I just need you to.
Endorse it, alright, is that be black or blue?
I'd take blue, just to make sure.
While, while we're signing, can I ask you about, uh, since it's other business, um, the decommissioning bond that we get back from the attorney on the date of the effective?
Um, we actually are still waiting to hear from Mark Browsy, came back to work on Monday, um, and uh, but we actually, um, no service over the, um, next year, they're not gonna become for the next meeting, and I've been hounding Mark Browsy about, you know, giving us an answer prior to the next meeting, so that we have some guidance on what we can and can't do. And uh,
Okay.
So I'm waiting to, I'm waiting to hear from Mark right now, so.
If he can respond on.
Uh, he's usually pretty good about it, I think it's just a mere fact he came back from Manana to go and started working again on Monday. He was like literally off the grid.
Warm.
Yeah, he's not cold enough here, so.
Yeah, yeah, it's a vacation place.
Yeah.
But it's never warm.
Oh, alright.
And that would never be my first show, but.
I have it on the bucket list, you know?
Yeah.
You know, Randy, that said, it, the, the numbers, I, I know we're, we're talking about upping it to meet our requirements, but even the numbers they submitted don't look right, according to their, their calculations.
Yeah, I, so, yeah, it's it's an issue of whether, in a zero point challenge, the board too on this, and the board was successful, so we'll, we'll see what happens, but um, the only thing with zero point, I think it was, they tried to do it, they tried, they didn't submit until after the policy was in place, so I don't know if that's gonna play a role in it or not, so.
Can we, uh, and we need to update the policy. Can we put a subcommittee together or get a peer review to help us write the new decommissioning bond policy, updated amounts and clauses and so on, that followed the property, not the owner, blah, blah, blah?
I, I, hey, we have probably one of the greatest resources right here in town, as you all know. She probably knows most and more, more than most peer reviewers.
Yes, yeah.
She, um, is, you know, and I think she would volunteer her time, I can't speak for her, but she's, I mean, she, she's emailing me twice a day, that's how much she's on top of things, so she very much wants to make sure that the town gets treated fairly in these projects, and she also is very up to date on the latest, you know, regulations, laws, whatever the state's working on, so I think she'd be a good, if you wanted to get a subcommittee to make sure that we're covering all the bases, you might wanna use her as a resource.
Yeah.
She probably knows most, more than most peer reviewers.
Yeah, absolutely. So what, what's the process? Do we get a draft of this, and then it gets circulated among us, and our lawyer and the conservation committee, see, like, who, uh, what's the process?
Yeah, I mean, we just have to do it in-house, but we should always, you know, we, yes, it has to go through Lori, cause we wanna make sure it's legal and will hold up if we ever did challenged on it. Um, with the subcommittee, unless, I mean, we can, you have a subcommittee with more than two members, as long as we notice for any subcommittee meeting, or if you don't wanna worry about noticing a meeting, should you have like two planning board members, maybe a conservation commission member if you want one. You know, this is Dagnin, Lori, you know, as a, another person, but if you have more than two planning board members, you have to notice, that's the only problem.
Two's the magic number?
Yeah.
Do you, what, what do you think, Mr. Chairman, should we create a subcommittee, I'll volunteer and, and ask this Dagnin?
Would it hurt to just put it as an agenda item and talk about it?
Yeah.
If anyone else wants to speak?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, why don't we just put it as an agenda item coming up?
I bet Lori could get you one, and then it could just be.
It's probably. Well, our, other towns have asked, they asked for hours, you know, our decommissioning policy, cause they respect the language of it, so, well, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll, I'll ask Mr. Dagnin for some help on that, maybe if you get a draft that, that we can then respond to, you know, something, yeah, then, rather than a blank sheet of paper.
Is there another board member, cause that, what I could do is shoot out an email to you, Lori.
Yeah.
You know, and see if she's interested in it, that way she can reply to all.
Yeah.
So.
I mean, I'll volunteer for such a committee as that, if anyone else would like to, or.
Okay, I'd definitely just want, I mean, on that email, we'll just.
Okay.
Yeah, they do all those little jotters, I mean.
Get some of your.
Okay, at least maybe she can turn us on to what she's reading, or she's getting her information.
Yes. And then to approve, so then to approve the policies at a town meeting vote, or?
No, give me that, break yours to board, thank you. We just run it through Rego to make sure that it will hold up.
And stay with a date.
Get challenged on it.
Okay, good, we'll get going.
It just becomes one of our columns.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, thanks for bringing that up. Push that some, yeah. Alright.
Should we put something on the next meeting, just to see where we're at about it?
Just to check in, or just say, hey, yeah, can we throw that on for our next agenda item? Throw your next meeting?
Yeah, I see, I'm ready to.
Yeah.
Yep.
Decommission bond.
Just keep it on then till we get it settled?
Right.
Yeah, have it on this with the dumb thought. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, um, next up, we got some A and Rs.
Yeah.
Alright, first one up would be the Stevens Family Trust on Freeman Road, I know we had some, we were looking, we put some clarification from our attorney as far as with it being a trust, and so I'm making sure, in our packet, we have a comment back from attorney Brian Falk.
Yeah, with those one where there was a I guess the challenge among family members of whether the save and R could be approved by the board. Um, the father, who, um, who's the executor, did sign it, and at this point in time, he is in charge of the estate as the executor, so if he wants to, you know, his signature on that is valid, so as long as he's alive, then um, they believe we can have the subdivision made and then.
And that's, that was advice from counsel, you heard that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I was gonna say that, yeah, it's okay.
Freeman Road.
Okay, got you.
Yes. Too much, they're in paragraphs, it's very.
Yeah.
That's the facts now.
Basically, they're subdividing one lot, lot off, if they, you look at the local, the locusts, they, they are dividing one lot off a very large port parcel, and the lot that they're subdividing off is uninforming lot, seven and a half acres. The property's located in that agricultural zone, so as far as the A and R portion, there's no issue with the app, application.
Is there access to that, off of Freeman?
Yeah, well, over here, it's still, and they have, they require one hundred seventy five feet to the large parcel near, so.
We have a motion to approve the A and R, but on Freeman Road for Stevens Family Trust.
I'll make motion to approve the Stevens Family Trust A and R on Freeman Road.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Ayes, unanimous.
This is it, right?
Yeah, that's the property line.
This is just, yeah.
Yeah, that's just distant, just to the house and everything.
Yeah, I'm hearing something.
Huh?
Outside downstairs.
What's that?
Is that, are you hearing anything?
Maybe.
Just needs to be dated, though.
Oh.
Don't mind. Thanks. Next up, for A and R, we have Otis Land Trust Management LLC in Sturridge Road.
Um, this project, what this A and R is, the applicant is Charlton Oil. They are basically buying this lot, one dash one from the property next door, at this time, they don't want to merge it to the property at one hundred Sturridge Road. They, they, for whatever reason, and our tax assessor is not happy about they, she has a big issue with the planning board, because it says it's not a billable law, you know, he's not using it that. But she doesn't like it from a tax purpose.
Right.
And, but, they can, you know, it's like, you know, I understand her position, but they can, you know, legally, they can do this, so. The planning board wanted to consider changing, you know, the bylaws or something about A and Rs. They could do, or subdivision regulations, they could do that later date. She says it makes, it confused him from a tax assessing standpoint to create a non-billable law.
Yeah.
Other times she's worked for have not allowed that to be done, but.
Well, assessment wise, a billable law is more valuable than one that's not billable law, so what's the deal? What's your problem?
Well, because, well, they're creating a non-billable law, so.
Those could be less than.
I, I mean, eventually, Ralph, you know, plans to merge that with the hundred Sturridge Road for whatever reason, he doesn't wanna do it yet, you know, maybe it's a tax reason, but the bottom line is he can, as long as the plan is marked that it's a non-billable law.
They don't like to create a non-billable law.
Yeah. But.
They can change it at the state level then, because based upon the A and R state law.
You can.
You can.
Well, that's probably, I guess other towns have had regulations where they said you can't, but
So it's not billable because it doesn't have the required furniture?
Massachusetts general law.
Square footage, you go.
Well, square footage, I get you, okay.
And then when they're ready, they just change it.
Yeah.
And then when they're ready, they just change it to a billable law?
No, he'll.
Yeah, well, he's gonna merge it.
And then.
His intent is merge it to one hundred Sturridge Road, make that property larger.
And then that one line just goes away.
I mean.
So it's non-billable, can they use it for other purposes? Can they put a driveway in there? Can they?
And talking to Evercons and Rej, I think it's all, it's all wet anyway.
Okay.
So, physically, there's a restriction there, never mind the square footage in the front.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
So, yeah, so I mean, we can, there's, there's no reason per our, you know, bylaws to say no to them, so.
Okay, make motion, we approve the A and R for Otis Land Management on, say, just Sturridge Road?
One thirty-four?
I go Sturridge.
No, no, wrong address.
Who'd sit down there?
One hundred.
One hundred Sturridge Road. Is that right?
The address here.
Okay.
So, yes.
Okay.
Close person. And second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye, Janice.
I will look there.
Oh, you still open your eyes?
All right, next up, we got Podcast LLC, site plan full extension request on eighty-seven Little Mugget Road. The applicant requests not to have an extension.
Do we have to vote on?
The applicant has decided to not pursue a new special permit. His, his previous special permit expired today.
Good.
So. At this time, he will, you know, can't operate the dog kennel. You know, unless he came back before the board, so.
So in theory, no vote since it expires, it's expired, right?
Where's that?
So no vote since it's expired?
Special permit expired per, the planning board approval, previous approval for the special permit.
Yeah.
It was until today, February seventh, so it expires as of today. He, you know, we, in discussions with him, he was working on purchasing a, an existing property that already was dog kennel or some similar service down in, in Oxford. Whether he's completed that or not, I don't know, so. And I'm sure the neighbors will keep us informed if he continues to operate, so. So, at this time, you know, the, the operation of the kennel expires.
All right. All right, next up, we have discussion on McManus Counseling PC Site Plan Field Item on one thirty-four Sturridge Road. I know that a couple of the members have taken side business to check out the parking. Hi, how you doing?
Good.
Good, one of the, one of the park rooms is right there.
And Michael's on too.
Yeah, I just saw that, thank you very much.
The planning board had requested this, and we had as a part of the approval of the application, and they had submitted it was it November, beginning, so I can't remember the exact meeting, but the planning board had reviewed their parking plan. And at that time the parking plan was acceptable, however, that I guess there were members that are concerned. Now, if the work's been done, is it going to work? The clearance for the parking area and everything, so. I don't know if anybody had any questions for the applicant.
Man, I've gone by there a couple of times, I've seen extra, I've seen cars in there, so it looks like you're able to move in and out of there pretty freely?
Yeah.
We, no issues?
I think there has been one occurrence when we have been full. And that's in the two months.
Including the handicap spot?
That's actually never been used, that's what we used when we had one person who was like, where am I supposed to park? Because somebody's appointment dragged over late, so my, that's circumstance you question, like that happened once. Otherwise, we have, you know, again, as we expected, anywhere from two to four cars, plenty of space to turn around. We've had no problems, people coming in and out of the parking, you know, in, off of Route twenty, so. Everything's going very well from our perspective.
And you have your occupancy from, from the town?
Uh, yes, I, we put in a new front door and new double door, well, it's part of the handicap accessibility working with Kirk. That, the permit, it's, the work has been done, but I don't think that they've done the inspection and closed the permit and so forth with the contractor, but all that's working through with Kirk.
Handicap spot, well marked?
Yes, yes, there's a sign up now and all that, it's good stuff, correct.
Any questions?
No, you got, is everyone else on it pretty much fine with it? John, you took a drive-by, right?
Yeah, no.
You're good with it?
And thank you for that, that's very nice.
That's a nice draw.
I did that myself.
Put the day job.
Yes, I'll pass on that.
And he uses survey.
It's a good tool to, to think out, you know, for, for your business too, just to think out. That's awesome.
I'd like to push that banking back, it does, it looks good.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we're very, we're thrilled, thank you.
I drove in and turned around.
Oh, great.
Very good, thank you, thank you for that, doing the work. It's a lucky permit.
So do we have to vote on, no?
No, it's fine, just a discussion. All right, Rich, thanks for coming up.
Appreciate it, thanks everybody.
Thank you, Michael, as well.
Thank you.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks, Michael.
All right, next up, we have a public hearing, continue for care site plan, special permit application to construct multifamily housing for sixteen units at four units per building. The property is located on Charlie Crossing Road in the Sonic Home Lot, assesses map thirty-four A, A one point eight Zone Village, we have an email from the engineer, Jay Dooboy's. We'd like to continue tight hearing as I have not gotten the revisions resolved with Graves yet. I do, I do have them, do have them done, we'll be dropping them off to Mike.
Yes, to Mike, Mike hasn't had a chance to review the revisions at this time, so this request of the twenty-first to be heard.
Art, do you have a motion to continue this to February twenty-first?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Janice. All right, we have continued public hearing for zoning map amendment under chapter forty-eight, section five, to consider amending land above in Route twenty, three ninety-nine West Road and eighteen Oxford Road identified as tax map thirty-eight A three and three point one, the parcels are currently split zone with a portion of the lots on Route twenty being zone community business and a portion of lots on Oxford Road that would be agricultural. AR sixty applicant is requesting the parcels, these zones with the entire parcels are community business.
Um, this, before we get started, because we noticed up to seven fifty, not
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Not anticipating that, you know, some of the other applications are gonna fall apart, so.
Thanks for coming up on that.
I want to talk about other projects, one of the things that hurts me, other businesses, just sort of boards aware. We have a attorney working on the decommissioning bond, I mean, not decommissioned bond, the bond that we are holding for the Hammond Hills project, Hammond Woods project, excuse me. Because I guess it's an issue if the bond is over a hundred thousand, it has to be voted on at town meeting possibly. So he's looking into the legal language of, to make sure that we do it right in order to hold the bond, to complete the project. His, our goal is to get it on the fall town meeting to set the road, because of course they went through another winter. Courtesy of our highway supervisor, he did go over there a couple of times to salt and foul a little bit, just so they weren't stuck. But we don't wanna make a habit of that until we set the road and but our attorney advises it, because the current bond amount is over a hundred thousand dollars, that it might have to be voted on at town meeting to hold the bond, which we don't see an issue, but we just wanna make sure we do it correctly.
To the chair?
Go ahead.
I know it's not probably our, but how is, how is the work getting paid for? That needs to be done.
Well, we had the bond amount.
Yeah, that's the, the bank that's holding the bond is aware of the situation. So, and they, they can't release any of the money without authorization from the town, so actually a cash bond. So, the money's actually literally in the bank, so.
So, but how does a contractor get paid for, for pulling in the work?
Well, the, the intention is the town will get the money distributed to pay any contracts that may be required and then return the balance back to the owner.
And we'll have to wait till the fall for that to?
Well, to vote the road in.
I mean, yeah, when, when can that, when can that work start or has it started already?
No, I mean, we'll start immediately, uh, Nick, the new highway supervisor, is well aware of the project. He doesn't see, we're gonna, there's some work that the highway department can do.
Okay.
Which will be a cost savings, you know, but it also keeps it from possibly needing to go out for an RFP for everything. You know, we're trying to expedite it so that we make sure that we get the road on the fall town meeting for acceptance, so that they don't go through another winter of waiting.
Is that in our bylaws, that a hundred thousand dollar bond has to go?
Well, that's what, the attorney's checking, he goes, most towns it is, but he didn't know off the, we had a meeting on Monday. So he was gonna check the Charlton, the town bylaws and everything, it's not on, within the zoning bylaws, but it might be in the town bylaws. So he just makes sure, he wants to make sure we do it by the board, so.
Then you want to update on Ponican?
Yeah, Ponican Hill, actually as you all know, has been a never-ending pro- problem with the unfinished portion of High Coast Road. Internally, staff here discusses numerous occasions, trying to come up with ideas on how to resolve the problem and one of the main issues is just not cost-effective for anyone to finish that road. So, you know, there's ways where the town could do things through eminent domain and stuff like that, but we really don't wanna go down that road if we don't have to. And then, at the same time, so we come up with alternatives, trying to work with the developer on how they could amend the subdivision to create enough lots to justify them finishing the unfinished portion of the road. And they, they are well aware of that, you know. We'll work with you if you agree to finish the unfinished portion of the road so it can be accepted, so.
And they're good with that, they're.
Yeah, they are actually on board with it, so.
So the unfinished portion meeting from the deadhead now all the way over to the other road, or just finishing up?
Actually, there's a, there's a, another option that, they could either create a extend the current cul-de-sac, build some reduced amount of lots off the current cul-de-sac. But there's also open space where there's possible connection down to North Meadow. And so then it takes away the cul-de-sac prob- problem. And he, the developers will. And so then it takes away the cul-de-sac prob- problem, and he, the developer is willing to. Because it's part of the open space, they obviously have to amend the whole subdivision, but for whatever they need to cut the road through. They'll give up land in some other place, so that they maintain the same amount of open space. And, you know, so there, there's some options here, so right now, he is working with his engineer, where he's gonna submit a. Rough idea to us and see if it's something, you know, that is feasible to the town, so. It's in everybody's best interest, because what will happen if we don't come up with ways to work with someone? It's gonna sit like that indefinitely, you know, so. We're hoping to come up with some ideas that we can work with the developer, the developer will take on the responsibility of finishing the road. He'll get some lots out of it, you know, be creating that last phase of subdivision, so it's a win-win for everyone, so. And it's not only would Mike come up with something.
To do that?
What's that?
It's a site modification?
Well, no, modification of the subdivision, so.
Yeah.
It, it's, yeah, it's, it's still gotta go before the board, but it, it resolves a lot of problems, so. We're hoping it works out, and so are the homeowners that already live over there.
Exactly, exactly. Alright, being past seven fifty? Uh, do I need to read the agenda?
No, you read it the last meeting, it's just that Mr. McCurb wasn't available, so.
Alright, yeah, alright, Chris, that's alright. That's alright, okay, I'm on track now. Go right ahead, Chris.
Okay, so, um. I'm here on behalf of, uh, two, two property owners, um, three ninety nine Worcester Road and, uh, eighteen Oxford Road, so I could either go. West to east or east to west, so, um, I guess I'll take it, uh, east to west, alright? Um, so the first property is, uh, eighteen Oxford Road, um, and that is a two point five acre property. Um, that's split between this, um, community business and agricultural, um, and I don't know, um, and I talked to Randy about this in the past, um. The designation of how far that community business was extended, um, in these properties, um. It, I, I guess was kinda arbitrary, so, um, with the reconstruction of Route twenty, um, these, these property owners. Um, you know, losing some access, egress, and they were like, well, you know, what can we potentially do here, and, um, does it make sense to? See if we can get the, um, planning board to support a, um, article to go in front of the, um, town meeting, to see if these, uh, properties could undergo a, uh. I guess, it would, its own change or its own, um, combination, or, um. So, um, I, I'm assuming everybody's familiar with, with the properties there in the corner, um. Um, they are surrounded, um, there's only one, if we look, there's, uh, twelve Oxford Road, that's, uh, a, um. It is, uh, it's a, it's a, it's a home which, which is rented, um. And other than that, you know, they're surrounded by Oxford Road and, and Route twenty, they do have driveways, um, access on both of these roads, so. I guess to me, it makes sense, I just wanted to get the, um, to fulfill the board on how, you know, if, if this should be something to support.
The abutting property's been notified? Or, or they?
Yeah.
They have been.
Public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the.
But not, not letters, not just the public hearing notification?
I mean, that's how you really.
Well, there's, there's no certified mail letter, you don't need to do that for us?
Oh, you are correct, it's, it's notifying the abutting communities. However, uh, I'm like, I don't wanna speak for the property owners, but, um, there's been a lot of discussion with the property owners along the portion about the whole. Put zone thing came up when we were reviewing the Jackson Motors application, you know, about. Moving the zoning boundary line to follow the profit lines over there, but. And probably a smart thing to do with the application go through, and then, so that we don't complicate their application. And the planning board will consider whether to change that zoning boundary line maybe for fall town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, we need to clean that up.
So getting back to your question with the certified mail, so the abutters have been or have not?
The abutters don't get notified when it's a zoning map change.
Okay.
We noticed in the paper twice, and we noticed by all the abutting communities, uh, C M R P C and the state. Yet, and with a map change, I mean, cause it still has to go to town meeting, so all we're doing right now is making a recommendation.
Okay.
To support or to not support the proposed, uh, map change. And then I'll go before the board as well.
Okay. Alright, any other, any questions from the board or comments as far as whether this, I mean, I think it makes sense. And I think that's kinda what we're, the whole Gary Jackson thing, it all started there.
Yep. Yep.
As how that line was, and makes sense to slide, make it move it back.
If you look at O'Malley's, it kinda cuts off through that.
Yeah, it's like each side of twenty, somebody just say, okay, the first two hundred feet of both sides of the road.
Which doesn't give you a lot of room, it puts everything right up front, which isn't, isn't ideal.
Agricultural, right up Route twenty.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, proposed change in zoning to community business for three ninety nine Worcester Road.
We need to close the public hearing first before we go.
Yeah.
That's alright, you could.
Anybody?
And then I got, anyone from the public, any comments or questions on this proposed zoning change for three ninety nine Worcester Road? As well as for eighteen Oxford Road as well? Alright, hearing none, seeing none, do we have a motion to close the?
We'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the zoning change for three ninety nine Worcester Road and eighteen Oxford Road.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Alright. And do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning change to community business for three ninety nine Worcester Road parcel.
More to support at the town meeting, right?
Yeah.
To endorse, yeah, to support the, uh, the language for the town meeting.
Second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Janus. Thank you, Chris.
Great, so that was four, right?
Yep.
Three ninety nine.
Yes, eighteen, yep.
Appreciate that.
Alright, good night. Alright, next up, we have a continued public hearing for E S A, proposed zoning bylaw amendment to add a utility scale over five megawatt battery storage system, Hopeful Lake District. There's an email from Wes Shavel from E S A this afternoon. And he's requesting to continue his application until the, um. February twenty first meeting?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're still working out about where to meet the, you know, instead of just a straight overlay, they wanna follow lot line, so. Until they figure out exactly where they are, they haven't quite determined that yet, and they're also kinda curious on the whole. Decommissioning bond portion of it after they saw the other application last meeting, so they're curious to what the attorney's going to. Uh, what his opinion's going to be, and I said, well, at this point in time, you really, that isn't really an issue, that becomes an issue when you submit an application, but. They still kinda just like to know where they stand when the time comes.
I think there's a lot of effort.
It's not gonna stop them from moving forward, they just.
Yeah, I, I think it's gonna be a lot of effort for them to get it in front of the town meeting to get that pushed through.
Well, I, I mean, they, they, they're a placeholder on the warrant right now, so.
And if they're not willing to pay that, that decommissioning fee.
Well, that's kinda like, they wanna hear that, because, I mean, it's a significant number when you talk about a hundred and fifty megawatts or a hundred megawatt. You know, at a hundred thousand megawatt, that adds up fast.
I'm typing the numbers on his phone, they go.
Especially when twenty-five percent of it's cash, you know, so that's.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
Even that's a significant, even if you get a surety for the rest of the twenty-five percent, based on decommission. Bond being cash is a significant number, so.
Right. Alright, do we have a motion?
Well, I just.
Yep, go ahead.
How this language is, I read through a lot of it, I've got any questions on? This couldn't be the language they wanna, I mean.
Well, that's what they're proposing, and I, that, that's the problem, is that, I've been working with him, is that he has to clean up.
Oh my god, there's some stuff we'd never would agree to in here.
Yeah. I think they took something simple and made it hard, and, uh, so I think it'd be, it'd be in a clearer form. Where it's gotta be put on the warrant, go to, you know, the town meeting.
Gotcha. Alright, do we have motion to continue this public hearing to February twenty first?
So what?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And he does intend to be at the twenty first town meeting, no matter what, even if he didn't have the decommissioning.
Okay.
Cause he wants to be able to address any of the board's concerns and everything, to realize time's running out to get on the town meeting.
A warrant, yep. Alright. Does anyone have anything?
Yeah.
How's this come up? Alright.
Although I know it's always on.
Yeah, we have more agenda items left.
Yeah.
Hello, Larry, thank you for coming, see ya.
Aye.
Oh, can we speak while, we were discussing there?
That's what I thought, can we do that?
As you, we asked her while she's on, I mean, it's just a discussion.
Okay, just.
Other business?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the other business, go ahead.
Well, you missed it earlier on, but we, I was kinda volunteering your services, providing you a reading course. Is that we want to, uh, um, board discuss having a subcommittee review the decommissioning bond to get it updated. I mean, decommission policy, excuse me, to get it updated. And I know you're a great resource for all of this, and Bill Fontaine has also agreed to work with us, that. Um, we wanna review the decommission policy and get it, you know, updated to whatever the current, you know. Um, rules are to make sure that we stay in compliance with whatever maps is, the states doing with decommission bond, but also that make sure that. We're covering everything that we need to cover with this policy, so I don't know if you're willing to help us with that?
Sure, yeah, of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
But, um, what I would probably do, I'll, I'll get some articles from the government websites, I know I gave you one from E P A. Um, for solar, just to show you what the government's been playing catch up. And I don't, I don't know how a policy versus. Bonds kinda change, so let me find out how solid, how, how firm that amount has to be, because as you know. They're mandating. Uh, recycling, or, um, they can't go in a landfill. They might open more recycling centers, so that number could be fluid in the future, so. Let me see what I can find out, and I'll just bring it to you, and we can go from there.
Good, thank you.
And we can talk next meeting if you want, I'll just bring in some info.
Alright.
Okay.
Thanks, Laurie.
Thank you, Laurie.
Yeah. You will.
Alright, have a good night, thank you.
Thanks, you too.
Alright, if anyone has anything else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, Janus.